On this, so thank you all once again for joining us on Call Together, the regular Village Board Meeting dated Monday, May 18th at 6:02 PM. Catherine, can you call the roll?
Trustee Lyman.
Here.
Trustee Sella.
Here.
Trustee Wood.
Trustee Mahoney.
Here.
Trustee Andreessen.
Here.
Trustee Cooney.
Here.
President Miller.
Here.
Trustee Wood.
She's dialing, so we'll just get going. All right, we're gonna bypass the Pledge of Allegiance for this. So first thing on our agenda is public comment on agenda items only. Do we have anybody out there that would like to address anything on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I can, we'll use a, or can, excuse me, would like a motion on the consent agenda. We have two items on there. If there's anything any trustee would like to take off or add on, please let us know.
Yes, I would like to take off item B, vote on that separately.
Okay.
All right, and I'll make a motion to approve the regular village board meeting minutes dated April 20th, 2020.
Second.
Very good. Discussion.
Trustee Lyman.
Yes.
Trustee Sella.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Cooney.
Yes.
Okay, very good. That takes us to item B. If I can have a motion on item B of the consent agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance waiving certain development regulations with respect to the PAL Land 2 LLC property.
Very good. Okay, discussion. Trustee Lyman.
As far as discussion, not really. I just, I just think we should reconsider this one. So I just wanted to pull separately from the consent agenda because to vote for one, you vote for everything on it. So I just wanted it separated.
Good. Anybody else?
What would you like us to consider, Jeff? I'm curious.
What, what would I like to consider? I'd like to consider the fact that I don't think it's a good idea that we do this. I mean, we've got a situation here where there are a lot of other factors that are going on that we don't need to discuss here in open meeting, but you know, we've, we're not, we're talking about just parking these cars on, on an empty gravel lot. And you know, it's just, they're just waivers that I just think is, sets a bad precedent. I mean, every, every development opportunity that comes before the board now is just fraught with waivers on every side. And I think we should just hold to the ordinances that we have, or get rid of the ordinances, or certainly reframe them.
Can we get an opinion maybe from Greg on what we're opening ourselves up to here as far as future considerations from other waiver requests? I don't know.
Sure. So the village creates its own system of waivers in its zoning ordinance, and the village board may consider on a case by cases whether to grant or deny those waivers. When, when the village board is presented with substantially similar requests, if you waived it in the past, you should waive it in the future for a substantially similar request. Otherwise, you could be violating someone's equal protection rights under the Constitution or what they're called. So trustee Lyman is correct in a way that by waiving these requirements, you are creating a precedence. At the same time, it's only precedence to the extent that you have very similar, nearly identical properties that come before you with those requests for waivers with identical, nearly identical sets of facts.
Okay. So one of the differences in a reason to deny it in the future could be location.
Yes, location when it comes to land use is a critical consideration to be taken into account.
Okay. And did we get the, the, did we go with the three-year expiration on this, or was it five years? Three, I think.
Three.
Three.
Yes, section four of the ordinance provides that it is, it shall expire on May 18th of 2023, which is three years from now unless the village president and board approve an extension in your sole discretion.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Catherine.
Trustee Lyman.
No.
Trustee Sella.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Cooney.
Yes.
Very good. Motion passes. We have no old business. We'll go directly to new business. We have several on here. The first is an ordinance amending sections of the village code. If we can have a motion on item A, please.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance amending various sections of the Village of East Dundee village code regarding building on our five lots.
Second.
Very good. Discussion on this.
Quickly then, well, is, if we, if voting on the number on item A, since the other waivers are individually, or the requests, the amendments are requests related to A, if we, if we vote in favor of A, are we also automatically voting in favor of B, C, D, and E, or whatever?
No, that's why they're separate.
Well, but they weren't voting issues on the agenda is why I'm asking, so. Not a problem.
Okay. All right. Anything else on A? Catherine.
Trustee Lyman.
Yes.
Trustee Sella.
Yes.
Trustee Wood. Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Cooney.
Yes.
Very good. We have a motion on item B, please.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance approving the rezoning to multiple dwelling district for the property located at 855 East Main Street.
Second.
Discussion on this one.
Trustee Lyman.
I, I, well, can you, can I, can I ask what the motion was again? I'm trying to log onto another device here.
Item B.
It was the rezoning.
Okay, hang on. I apologize for this. The Commodore 64 is not working well, huh?
What's that?
Commodore 64 is not working well.
Yeah, who would have thought it? It's a classic.
Jennifer, do you just want to explain in high level detail what this is?
Absolutely. This is just, item B is the rezoning for 855 East Main from the current zoning, B3, I believe, to R5, multifamily. This is the rezoning of the property. The next item will be the variances, and then the third item after that will be the landscape waivers.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'm in the middle of a download here to get this to a tablet. I'm on my PC here. So yeah, my, my vote would be yes on the rezoning. Listen, I don't want it to appear as though I'm, you know, in favor of one and not the other, because what we're talking about here with this whole project is also amendments to ordinances and so forth. So I want to just clarify my position on this compared to PAL's request in that this will be certainly different because it brings us even with the 611 project as far as the, the monies that will be brought in for it. So as a way to get us to that point, approval of this would, would get us there. Ordinarily, I wouldn't be in favor of it otherwise because I'm, you know, I'm okay with working with any developer, but the village has got to get something in return. So, so my vote on B is yes.
Trustee Sella.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Cooney.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion, which is a variance. If we have a motion, I'm sorry, if we have a, somebody would make the motion on item C, please.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance approving variations for lot size, floor area ratio, and building height for the property at 855 East Main Street.
Second.
Question I have on this one really quick, if, if I could, the 32.48 feet request on this is exactly the same height as the existing structure at 811?
The buildings are identical in size. They're just, the difference is the number of one bedroom and two bedrooms, but they're identical projects. There just is no retention on the property for 855.
So they're not going to share the, the retention in the rear that would also be shared with the River Haven Development?
Joe, can you comment on that?
I thought that was the case.
Yeah. This, this lot was part of the River Haven development, so the detention is already in progress.
Okay.
Right. This is John Curtis, and that property is already designed to participate in that detention with River Haven.
Okay.
Good enough.
Okay, Catherine.
Trustee Lyman.
Yes.
Trustee Sella.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Cooney.
Yes.
Okay, finally on this, there's a motion with a variance for the landscaping. We can have a motion on item D, please.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance approving a variation from landscaping chapter of the Village of East Dundee village code requiring landscape islands for more than 10 parking spaces in a row for the property at 855 East Main Street.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Discussion on this.
Yeah, I've got a question. If what we were going to do to accommodate 855 was eliminate four spaces out of 811, and the alternative, or the, the compromise there would be to add four more spaces to 811, where are they going to put them? Because if you're taking out, just for egress purposes, into 811, or I'm sorry, 855, had to lose some spaces, then where are they supposed to, where are these four new spaces supposed to be added? I didn't see that in the packet.
Again, this is John Curtis. On the 811 property, on the west side of the existing parking lot, the north end, there is space there for additional four spaces. So we will be redoing the curb line and the parking surface in that area and adding four spaces there as we delete the four for the ingress, egress at 855.
Okay. Can I ask if there's been any question or consideration to the entrance off of 72 that shares River Valley Shopping Center with State of Illinois? Has anybody objected to that or questioned it? It seems like it's rather close to 25 for In-N-Out there. So I'm just wondering if anybody's questioned anything.
That is, there's an existing cross-access agreement with the 855 property and the retail development on the east side there. The retail development that Plody originally granted that cross-access agreement to them because the, most of that, that entrance off of 72 is on the 855 property. So it was, so it was where Plody granted the cross-access to the retail center in order for them to accommodate that entrance there.
Well, one concern I have just right off the bat is, in the event that the River Valley Shopping Center were to be sold, is that going to affect your, the agreement that you have with that landowner now? So let's say five years from now, somebody buys that and says, well, we're going to seal you off. What kind of problems is that going to cause with these two buildings in and out?
They can't do, they can't do that because they cannot cancel the cross-access agreement. First of all, 855 granted that cross-access. And if they were to not want to use the cross-access, that's up to them. However, the, that would obviously deter their ability for ingress and egress off of 72, which is extremely important for that retail center. And number two is that does continue with the deed. It's recorded on the deed, and it is not subject to anybody's ability to, yea or nay, it's in perpetu, or it's in perpetuity that it will continue with the deed whether 855 is sold or the retail center is sold.
Well, Jeff, I'm, I'm gonna have to stop you here anyway. It's a moot point because it's already done, but it's not on our agenda. What we're talking about now is a landscaping question. So I don't know if that's relevant to the discussion at this point. It may be a valid question, but that's not something that's on the agenda for this evening.
Okay.
All right. So we have, where are we at with D, Catherine?
Trustee Lyman.
Yes.
Trustee Sella.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Cooney.
Yes.
Okay. That takes us to the exciting item E here, which is amending our fees and fines on alarm systems. Did you all understand this? This is basically housekeeping and getting us in line with documents that hadn't been changed for many, many years. Did you have anything else you wanted to add to that, chief, for Jennifer?
Hi, George.
George, you have to unmute yourself.
Okay, it's actually more than housekeeping, Lael. We've rewritten the, the entire ordinance. It was badly in need of rewriting. And I have a little experience with alarm systems because the North Shore is loaded with them. And the current alarm ordinance isn't fair to residents, businesses, or the police because, well, in multiple ways. One of them is, I didn't know how many alarm systems we had in town because no one kept, keeps track of it. In other words, we have 173 alarm systems on the records, but there's no requirement to re-register at intervals. So we have no idea how many of those are active. Another thing is that the cost for an alarm system used to be based on how many contacts you have in your house, how many doors and windows. To my way of thinking, that's backwards. We're actually discouraging people from having a robust alarm system. Should have, the cost should have nothing whatsoever to do. And all we're going to charge is $15 to register an alarm system initially, and every two years, re-register for $10. False alarms have been rebooted, and the first, I guess it's five through eight, false alarms cost $150. Let me assure you that I'm very reasonable about false alarms. In fact, last week, a business appealed, and I, I granted an exception to them because they had a good reason. But it escalates upward depending upon how many false alarms per year. Also, the current, I just want to mention one more thing about the alarm ordinance. The current ordinance has the police department licensing or granting a license to a company that wants to install an alarm in East Dundee. No, 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 no. They're licensed by the state of Illinois. There's no reason whatsoever for us to examine that, you know, and question it. It's make work. And so we, we've really done a complete rewrite and brought it up to current best practice, in my opinion.
Oh, good. Thank you for that. Okay, any questions for the chief?
I would only ask, why, why do we need to charge a fee at all to register an alarm? I mean, what is it costing us? Just your time to take the form in?
Well, actually, our records clerk does, does that work and keeps the records. You know, $15 is nothing, and $10. And, oh, also, I should have mentioned, Scott, we're going to have the, the registration forms online, so make it easier for people. But yeah, it's, it's strictly an administrative fee.
Can I ask you this? If, because I, I actually had an alarm system put in a couple of years ago by Comcast, and I didn't know that you had to get a fee, a permit, or anything like that. Does, do, do these companies that put in the alarm systems, do they come direct to the village and get the, get the permits, or?
No.
Are people supposed to come on their own?
No, people on their own.
Okay.
And maybe with this amended ordinance, perhaps we should advertise it a bit so that this is better known.
Yeah, it should definitely go into the newsletter so that people understand what's going on.
Thank you.
I think in the newsletter, if we, if we choose to put the information in there, we should also tell, we should also note how it benefits the homeowner to register the alarm system.
Great.
Of course, we're in the position of helping them. The police, the police like the alarm systems. We help people with it.
Hey, George, as a practical matter, when someone gets an alarm, like, I've got one of my building here, and all I know is it's got a bunch of lights, and somebody comes in and says, yeah, it works fine, and they put a sticker on it. Now, is that automatically, like, tied into the police and fire departments, like, when they install it?
No, sir. The business owner, the business owner arranges with their alarm company who they want to be notified. Some people, some people want it to go direct to the police. Others wanted to come to the key holder, for example, and the key holder will advise the alarm company if they want the police notified.
Oh, okay. So there is, so there, there would be no way of, if somebody just had, unless you guys actually get a call from the alarm company, you would have no way of knowing.
That's correct. Or from you, yeah.
Right.
And so, so a couple of weeks ago, we got an alarm at a floral shop in town, middle of the night, two in the morning. And I think I wrote this up in my monthly report, that there were, in fact, there was, in fact, a person inside the building. So it was a valid alarm. They would in no way get fined for, you know, a false alarm. That was perfectly valid.
Somebody really needed flowers.
They, they needed personnel file information because they'd been terminated, and they wanted to apply for unemployment. And the owner of the business asked us to confiscate the key, and that was done.
Like, midnight is the time to do that?
I'm sorry?
It does seem like midnight is the time to, to get that information.
Actually, 2 AM, yeah.
Even better.
All right. We're done with this? Catherine?
Trustee Lyman.
Yes.
Trustee Sella.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Cooney.
Yes.
All right. Very good. You have the financial reports in your packet. Don't really have anything to report this evening, other than been keeping an eye on the river. It's pretty high, but it's not as high as it was last year at this point. It looks like it's peaked at about 11.3, and it's going to take another four or five days, I think, before it actually starts going down again. And because we've got some, some, some more rain forecast. But right now, it looks like, and Phil, you can correct me if you've seen anything different, but Maiden Lane has got just over the apron, and Johnson Street is typically, there's one house that's completely surrounded, and 75% surrounded. And then there's what used to be a backyard that's now a giant swimming pool. But other than that, I think we're okay. Lots of people pumping down in the downtown area. I haven't been on Went Street, Phil, so I don't know if you have any updates. You're on mute. You have to unmute yourself.
Um, yes, thank you. Went Street, as of today, is in, is in good shape. We had, we did get some calls. So we had, over the last four days, well, since last Thursday, we've had two substantial rain events. Each, during each event, we had close to four inches of rain. So the National Weather Service has reported just shy of eight inches of rain over the last, well, since last Thursday, split in half between the two events. So last Thursday and the Friday, that, that rain event caused some, some flooding in Lyons Park. And so we have, we were in kind, we received several calls from the residents whose homes back up to the park, and we communicated with them. Yesterday, we received, and then into today, we received several calls on basement backups, one business, and then I want to say two or three residents. And then we obviously have some, some street flooding in, in some of the unincorporated areas. But as far as today is concerned, Went is, that area is, is, is fine, so to speak.
So one of the things that I've asked Jennifer and Phil, obviously, to start working on is, because they've done a, such a great job, in my opinion, on this COVID preparation plan, to start putting together a formal document on how we respond to, you know, whether it's critical rain events or river flooding, so that we have something on paper that, you know, can be handed down and amended. And, and it basically, because, you know, one of the questions I ask is, I drive around when it rains like this because I want to take a look at the streets and the flooding and see what happens. But, you know, and I know Phil and quite a few other people are looking at the river gauge in Algonquin to try and, you know, determine what's going to happen. And we're probably, I would say, you know, an inch or two away from where we were last year, where we had to start sandbagging behind the houses. And specifically, if you look at the parking lot at One East Main, there's a fence there, but it's wood, and it's not going to stop any water. And it's fencing, it's, we ended up sandbagging the other side of that fence, probably for half a block, I would say. And that prevented water from getting into a lot of homes. So what we're going to do is put together a plan based on, you know, obviously, future weather conditions and predictions, but also the rise of the river so that we know when it hits 11.2, we do this. When it hits 11.3, we do this. Because sometimes this happens at night, right? And we shouldn't have to be getting on the phone and telling people, hey, it's now time to get sandbags. This should be something where there's an immediate response. And, you know, we know what we do for a second and third. So I look forward to helping with that. If anybody else wants to jump in and provide any help or information, we'd be happy to have you.
Yeah, I'm there for it. I'm just wondering, how are we fixed for sand and for bags?
We have sand and we have bags. I'll confirm quantities and numbers, but I talked to, we spoke yesterday about that, and I know we have both. In fact, I want to say, at some point last summer, we set out just outside our gated area at the Public Works Garage. We put out a pile of sand and also a pallet of bags that people could kind of self, self-serve situation. And I don't recall anyone participating, but then again, it was different scenario last summer, last year. So we can certainly do that again this year, if and when need be.
Yeah, and, you know, the, the beauty of living on a river, right, has its, has its challenges. And I, I say this every year, and unfortunately, the number never changes in a good way. I'm looking at historic reported crests on the Fox River, and eight of the last 10, and possibly nine of the last 11 have happened in the last three years. So every year, we're hitting a historic high, or a second, or a third. I mean, it's, it's not a good trend, and it's not going to get better. There's nothing we can do about it.
Well, Lael, can I ask, do we know if any of that is due to how communities upstream are handling some of the dams or?
No, it has nothing to do with that. You know, from a, I mean, I, I don't know if you want to weigh in here, Joe, but first of all, the Fox River is a watershed for a tremendously large area, all the way basically up to the Wisconsin border, which means when it stops raining here, it takes three days for the water to, to go past us. Having a dam or having a lock or anything else isn't the problem. And then the, the problem that we have here is that the ground level, you know, especially when you get three rains in a you know, especially when you get three rains in a row, the ground is so saturated. Uh, and I could tell you my house right now, for example, and I'm sure anybody else that lives down here, the groundwater comes directly up from the, from the, from the, you know, the basement. It's not coming in a window. It's not rushing in off the streets. It's not coming in off the river. It's coming in from the ground. And there's absolutely nothing you can do because that, that water table from the river stretches out miles in either direction. So, you know, you would, the, the, the solution for this isn't a dam or anything else or a seawall. Um, you'd basically have to take the Fox River and put it, put it in a concrete bed. So that it doesn't, you know, and that's, that's not gonna help either. I mean, I've got friends and neighbors that are up on Barrington Avenue. And they're pumping for a week. Because you can't dig a hole around here without hitting either rock or water. And everything that's on Route twenty-five, everything from Walmart's parking lot, everything from Sanders Village, everything from any of those areas there that's concrete. There's a virtual river running down underneath Route seventy-two and down Barrington Avenue and down every other hill that we've got. And it's all seeking its own way to the, the river. And there's nothing you can do about that. So I'm, I'm, personally, I'm shocked that we just haven't had roads collapse, just, you know, with sinkholes. But.
Way to jinx it. You know, it's a, it's a concern. We, if you remember a few years back, we had a big sinkhole in the Manor parking lot. And that certainly is on the path to the river, so.
Talking about it, Dundee Auto.
Dundee Auto. Well, do you remember the one in Manor parking lot?
No.
Oh, yeah, that one, it's. Right, right. It swallowed a car. Yeah, it was nasty.
So, anyway, just wanted to let you know, it's on the top of our minds right now, but right now, it looks like we're in good standing. I don't think, unless, you know, we get a lot more rain in the next couple of days, but, uh, we, we got close on this one, so. We'll try and do better the next time. So, okay, that's all I have. We'll go around the board quickly and see what, uh, we'll go by order of Hollywood Squares here. Mr. Koonzie?
I did, I did notice on George's, uh, report that there were three semi-trailers stolen from our friends over by, uh, Christina Drive. I often think that when George puts things like that in a report three times, he means he's trying to tell us something. You did mention in your report that you talked to them about their security. What did you say?
They, they put together a plan with our detective. And because the thefts are occurring on midnight shift, it's simply not enough for us to increase patrols because what do our officers know when there's a semi-trailer coming or going? They don't know if it belongs. So on, on weekends now, they have set up a, um, a checkpoint on the road going into the property and everyone that goes in is identified. And so far, that's been working well.
Are these trailers from the driving school or are they from a different business that's over there?
Different businesses. And, uh, one of them was recovered in Morton Grove. No arrest was made, but at least the, uh, vehicle was, was recovered. And this is part of a ring that's hitting a wide area and we're just caught in the middle of it. So I do think, though, that the measures that are being taken are, are, are good.
Okay. I was thinking, uh, not really related to that, but in that area about, you know, the look of, of that area as we drive into town down Route seventy-two. And it seems to me that we could really make it a lot nicer if we just used some natural fencing, as in trees and bushes and stuff like that, from like from Christina Drive to like the cemetery for one thing. And then on the other side, you have all these buildings and they aren't terrible, but when you get to the other side, uh, over by, um, what I guess is considered that forest preserve area, there's another, you know, large lot there that, that could be covered with some, just some trees and bushes along seventy-two. Is that something that we've ever, ever considered?
I don't think so, but I'd certainly consider that.
Well, actually, that idea had been brought up that a berm be, um, constructed to block off, and then there were gonna be some evergreens and so forth planted on the berm to block off that car, uh, truck parking. If the development along seventy-two hadn't taken place within a certain amount of time, at this point now, those buildings are there, so the question hadn't been raised since, but it was initially. So before Cassidy, um, went in and, uh, whatever the, the other building back there is, I can't remember. It's the, the gunsmithing shop. That, um, was going to act as a, as a, as a buffer, if you will, between that truck parking and seventy-two. So, um, but yeah, I'm, you're talking, Scott, on the Plody piece, east of Rock Road. Yeah, I think the same thing. I mean, there was supposed to be the, the, um, shaded fencing that went in there, but that seems to be a challenge to keep up. You know, because it continues to fall down or whatever. But I would be in favor of something like that.
You have to kinda keep in mind too, it's I dot right away. And, um, as far as the Palumbo piece, I think, you know, because he's been back and forth on building, the additional industrial building there. So, um, I think that's what he would tell you, but it would have been a good time to ask before we voted on that item. To make that request because that could have been a request for the previous, uh, parking waivers that were granted, um, that were similar.
It was, Jennifer. It was actually understood, but it was never part of.
It wasn't in an ordinance.
Correct.
That's the problem. So we can certainly ask Plody when they come before us for another time, if they're gonna do something. You know, they proposed buildings on that site too. They're working, they wanna get a building on, on that side and then relocate, you know, that outdoor storage and parking that they have too. So they do wanna do something. So I don't know, you know, with both of those developers, I don't know how anxious they are to plant when they really wanna see something there. But you make a good point, um, Scott. We should ask those things when they're asking things of us and try to get it done.
All right. Trustee Mahoney?
Yes, um, going back to the river and the water levels, um, I was just walking by on Edwards and Bonnie Dundee. And the property owner is, um, definitely pumping out the area that was crossing the street. However, now the water level to the area that they are pumping into is dangerously close to encroaching on the street. At the other end, um, it's not going straight into the river, um, or into the, the creek, McIntosh Creek. So, I mean, one problem might be causing another problem and I just wanted to make sure that, even though the property owner is taking care of it, that it might be another issue and another conversation that you're gonna have to have with them in a slightly different location down the road.
I guess the long term on that is if this is a natural spring that's opened up on that property, and it certainly appears.
Yeah.
It is. I mean, right now, there's a tremendous amount of rainfall. I mean, I measured eight to ten inches in, in our backyard, uh, yesterday over the three-day event. But, you know, if in fact that is what's occurring there, then we need a long-term issue for that.
Yeah, yeah. Even if it's trenching it to, to the, to the, from the area that they're pumping into, to where the stream is. But then that also get, I don't know if that involves Army Corps of Engineers because now we're.
Of course it would.
You know, getting all that involved. So nothing easy about that. And then, um, Jennifer, the question I had, and maybe you're gonna be covering it in your, um, report, is, um, any kind of update that you have in your conversations with the governor's office on phases and lifting plans? So you don't need to answer it now, but if you could answer it in your, your section, I appreciate it. Thanks. That's all I have.
Good. Trustee Sella?
I love, love the new signs in downtown. Uh, thank you, Brad and Amanda, whoever else had a hand in it. Phil, your team?
Yep, they look good. All right, Trustee Lyneum?
No report.
Trustee Andreessen?
No report.
Trustee Wood?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, um, do we have a, I, I believe we have a contractor, the landscaping company for the downtown area regarding the mowing, or is that our Public Works?
Historically, we have outsourced that, but this year, um, because of our, our economic situation, we have taken that, moved that to an in-house mowing operation.
Okay, well, I was just looking around today after I noticed all the beautiful signs, Phil, that we probably need to get some mowing down there. And at least although we're not having our events, at least make the downtown area look, you know, obviously tidy and clean and inviting. And put the depot grounds in a situation where those picnic tables are six feet. So we can have actually people visiting and keeping social distance while still, you know, having at least some outdoor time. So that was all I had. Oh, one other thing, um, and again, this is my, seems to be my pet peeve, four away, uh, Barrington Avenue, as far as the exterior. Uh, again, we're in a situation where, you know, it's not being maintained. And as the neighbor that has to drive by it, it really just kinda gets me a little crazy. So if someone could address that, I would appreciate it. And that's all I have.
Very good. All right. Jennifer?
Yes, I'll answer, uh, Trustee Mahoney's question first. So, um, I think it was, two Fridays ago, I sent out a report on what I thought the governor's phases for Restore Illinois would mean to us. Since that time, um, the governor has indicated, um, that there could be a potential movement to Phase Three on, I think, May twenty-ninth. I've been watching the metrics. In order to make that move and it seems likely the metrics are, the met, the metric choice, um, isn't really that significant. Like you would think the metrics would be based on number of cases or number of deaths. It's not. Um, so I think that the metrics to go to Phase Three are, are within reach. Um, so I think we'll see that. Phase Four is a little bit trickier because they haven't published their metrics. The metrics are basically that any, basically that there's available testing to anyone. I don't know how far away, uh, we are from that and I, I haven't gotten a good sense from the governor's office where we, where we are. You know, they always say our goal is ten thousand tests a day. Our goal is twenty thousand tests a day. But I don't understand fully what that metric means, but there, there is a time period after that. Now, um, there's been a lot of challenges to the governor's plan and Metro West, um, East recently sent out a letter, as, as so did the, um, Illinois Municipal League, asking for the governor to take the four regions in the Restore Illinois Plan and make it eleven regions. And those eleven regions would be existing, um, emergency management services regions that exist, EMS regions. Um, and so both of those entities have asked for that. I guess the purpose of that is to try to pull the collar counties out of Chicago. Because the Chicago, um, deaths and cases are obviously a lot higher. So there is that going on. Uh, we don't have a, a feel from the governor yet. Metro West also, uh, sent in a letter asking the governor to add restaurants to Phase Three. I don't know if that's likely or not. Um, so a lot of this is still in flux, you know, unfortunately. Um, and things just change every day, so it's, it's very hard to say, you know, what's gonna happen. I think he'll stick to Phase Three on May twenty-ninth. That's the sense I get. Um, but we need those guidelines. President Miller can talk about that, the, the lack of guidelines, um, that exist when things actually do open, what is in place. And, you know, I have not seen anything put together. And the last information we've gotten, gotten is that they're working on it. So I think the guidelines are key too, and they're still missing.
Yeah, and if I could add on to that, um, I forwarded off the reopening plan. Well, I'll, I'll, I'll step, take a step back. There, there's, the plan that Illinois has to reopen right now is based on the criteria of certain data points, but it doesn't tell anybody how to reopen. Which, which is difficult. And for example, if you are a restaurant, and I, I certainly hope that they will allow restaurants to reopen at limited capacity, although they can't tell me what capacity that actually is or what they're thinking about. But what does it mean? I mean, you know, if you're a retail store, does that mean that, yeah, obviously, everybody has to have a mask on. You'd have to have a sign on the door. But then, you know, do I need to have PPE for my customers if somebody walks in without a mask or, you know, do I have to have those? And, and how often do I have to sanitize things? Well, Wisconsin's actually come out with a really good plan. It's. What's that?
No plan at all. Just overturned.
No, actually, Wisconsin's plan to open is the opposite of ours. But on the other hand, the guidelines that they've given businesses is brilliant. Um, I'll send that out to you tonight or tomorrow, but, um, it, it's easy to find. And it goes into detail by category of, excuse me, of, of type of business. So for example, there's a construction business, there's a restaurant business, there's a retail business, there's a a wide variety of things, so that a restaurant would understand what they need to do to reopen. And we just don't have that guidance. And, and unfortunately, I hate to give credit to the state of Wisconsin, especially now. But I've actually sent that on to the, um, Illinois Municipal League and they're gonna forward that to the governor's office and say, hey, guys, can you do something like this? Because we've all been asking. And something like that, you know, this needs to go out into the hands of our business owners weeks before they open. Because my next problem is, okay, you know, my business, I gotta go order masks, I gotta order gloves, I gotta order things like that to prepare to reorder. But now everybody else in town's gonna do the exact same thing. The states can't even get this stuff. I was on Uline the other, uh, today looking to see, and they're, and Uline, I don't know if you're familiar with them, but they're a huge shipping organization that does everything. They're like the Walmart of office supplies. They're out of all that stuff until July, August or September. And I talked to, um, one of the local restaurant owners in town and I said, you know, you order things through Cisco and Edward Don and, you know, other, you know, these are giant places that deliver, you know, I don't even know how many thousands of truckloads of supplies that deliver, deliver into Chicago every day. You know, can you get these things? He goes, nope, they're all out. So, you know, now I see, okay, all the businesses are gonna start to open. They're all gonna need masks and gloves and things like that. They're either going on Etsy or Amazon. And the prices are nuts. So how do you do that? I mean, how does everything open up when you don't have the supplies to be safe? Or what's gonna happen? People aren't gonna be wearing this stuff. It's, it's problematic. So there's a lot of things that we're looking at. And pushing back and saying, guys, have you thought about this? Have you thought about this? And they all go, no, no. We keep asking, we don't get any answers. So we'll see.
Yeah, and, and Leo and I talked today about, we do have access to, um, hand sanitizer and like wipes that you would use almost like for ribs. You know, we, we can get those things. We got the hand sanitizer from a distillery and then bottled it ourselves. So we can, we can have that available to the businesses for distribution. And we're just looking into the cost because it's, as this crisis goes on, it's clear, it becomes more clear that there aren't any agencies reacting on any level. So it's really up to us to react. So we're going to at least look into that. And, you know, masks and things like that, that's harder. You know, that's almost impossible right now. But we do have a good supply for, um, our employees, you know, law enforcement, Public Works. Um, other things that are going on as far as, uh, the coronavirus, just so you know, obviously, we're getting a lot of pushback, especially since, um, Wisconsin. We're getting a lot of requests to defy the governor. And what we've done, you know, and I've talked to Leo about this, it seems like there's something every day, is follow the governor's orders. I don't know exactly how each and all, every one of you feel. But that's, I think we have to assume that if the governor has the authority to declare an emergency and the governor has the authority to implement executive orders, um, and we're an arm of the government, you know, then we follow the governor's orders. Um, but that's not happening everywhere. And this is unusual and uncharted, uh, territory, but we're getting a lot of pushback from that. And this is unusual and uncharted territory, but we're getting a lot of pushback from that. We had to shut down Paintball Explosion, and it wasn't easy. We had to tell Santa's Village, they had to significantly modify a food fair they were trying to have in the parking lot, and they agreed. But it seems like every day is something. We shut down Gat Guns indoor range after we got certification from the governor's office about the range having to be shut down. So I just want you to know these things that if you hear, you know, you're getting pressure from businesses or whatever, it's out there and you can direct it, you know, to me, that's fine. Or pressure from residents, we're having residents call also, asking us to defy the governor. And they're seeing what other towns are doing, which is fine. Each and every town for themselves, the way they want to react. But this is where we're at today. And if you guys want, you know, feel that you need to change course, you know, we can have that discussion.
And I'll just get into that. I probably get one voicemail a day from somebody that opposes this, and it's usually just because they believe it's an unconstitutional overreach by the governor. I'm not going to get into that. I don't care. It's above my pay grade. If you want to go litigate the governor's office, be my guest in line. But the guidelines that he's proposing, I think, make sense and are based on facts. So that's, that's why I'm separating those two things out. I said before, I don't do politics. So, you know, we're going to follow that line. And then, you know, the other thing, too, is, you know, if somebody's going to sue me, they're going to sue me on either side of this thing. Nobody that I've gotten a call from yet has identified themselves, given me a name or an address or claimed to be a resident. So I will just say that. It's very few people. On the other hand, when I walk around and I talk to our businesses and I talk to our residents, they are very happy that we are keeping them protected. We are surrounded by an ocean of blue dots or red dots, depending on how you want to look at it. And, you know, we're relatively safe here. So we're going to, we're going to stay the course. And, you know, and Jennifer brought up a good point, you know, not everybody is enforcing everything the same. Case in point, drove past Village Squire today. Got a sign out there. You know what it says? Curbside pickup. My ties. Not sure that, how that's allowable. We've had several of our businesses that said, yeah, we just want to mix everything, you know. So you can't do that, guys, sorry. Whether or not, I think that makes sense or not is irrelevant.
Well, I don't think the, I don't think the pressure that we're likely to experience has, has surfaced yet. I think we need to give this about another year, perhaps two, when we and every other municipality are forced to figure out a way to plug up the shortfall of sales tax revenue that we are going to experience because of this whole thing. That's where the pressure's going to come in. Because I think the only opportunity we're going to have to make up for it is going to be property taxes. And I think people are really, really going to gain, you know, they're in for a big shock. I'm, I'm holding my breath, but, you know, it's, I'm not optimistic.
I, I get your point, but I've told people before, you know, that this is a matter of revenue or it's a matter of lives. You can choose one, you can't choose both. It's a balance. What number of residents' lives do you want me to sacrifice so that you can get that paycheck?
Well, I'll make that decision.
Nor do I want to let you make any decisions.
Okay, two other quick things. I mean, there, I could talk about the coronavirus all day, but I will spare you. Besides the banners, thanks, Brad and Amanda, for putting those up. They are, for getting that project done and the committee for designing them, it was excellent, and Public Works for putting them up. We have had some dumping going on, so I just thought I would mention that. There were some garbage bags that were dumped at the depot, and there's been five occasions of dog poop dumped at the Village Hall. Sorry, I'm trying to say this with a straight face. So this is, I, I believe this is part of the protest about what we're doing. And we will be addressing it. We're going to put out a message out there, but just keep your eyes and open. If you see anything, please let us know. But I don't, I think this is far from over. It's been going on for a couple of weeks. But last night, it was last night, correct? There was multiple garbage bags dumped at the depot.
Yeah.
So, and it wasn't related to the garbage cans being full or anything else. So just stay on it.
I have a question regarding the dumping at the Village Hall. Is there a camera at the police department that can be looked at? So there's an idea?
We already tried that. I'm sorry, we don't have one on the front of Village Hall.
I'll put a Zoom doorbell on my house. That ought to take care of it.
Yeah.
It sounds to me like we should implement a dog tax. That's what I thought, that we, us taking crap is only rhetorical.
All right, let's move on here.
That's all I have, unless anyone has any questions from me.
None.
Village Attorney.
No report this evening, thank you.
Village Engineer.
I have no report.
Chief of Police.
I only want to say one thing, and that is a reminder that we've lost to retirement our deputy chief, who did a terrific job and a great deal of work. He's a big loss. He and his family tonight are in Florida, where they plan to stay.
Best wishes to him and his family. Public Works.
No report, other than what we talked about earlier with the burst of the rain we've had the recent few days.
Right. Building official?
No report.
Finance? All right. Public comment on anything? Open it up here, guys. Anybody want to talk about anything? See any numbers on the call here, so. All right. Well, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
All right, thank you so much, folks. Stay safe and healthy, and we'll see you later.
Take care.